I will call this evening's meeting to order. Would you all please join me with the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone this evening, both here and at home. I also would like to begin the meeting with the introduction of two new commissioners. Natasha McCall is joining us, welcome. And Phil Bartolata is also joining us, and we're glad to have both of you. We'll have a full house now, it's been awhile. All right, our agenda is the minutes from the last meeting on the consent agenda. We have a public hearing for rezoning for Knox Street, a public hearing for the vacation for Parkway Estates, site plan and design review for Einstein Brothers, and a preliminary plat for Einstein Brothers, excuse me, Einstein Brothers. That being said, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second item is a public hearing for the rezoning at 1201 Northwest Knox Street. This is a public hearing, once I open the public hearing, we will have exhibits from the city attorney, we will hear staff's presentation, we will have the presentation by the applicant, should there be an applicant, any pros and cons from the audience, and then I will bring it up here for discussion, and then I will close the public hearing. That being said, I will open this public hearing. Mr. McDonald.
Madam Chair, the city has eight exhibits. Number one is the staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV Land Use Section of the Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. Those are all of the exhibits the city would enter into the record at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. Again before this evening is a request to rezone 1201 Northwest Knox Street. The current zoning is T3, that's the suburban designation for the downtown zoning district. The applicant is requesting to rezone that, which is again a more primarily residential zoning district, to T5, or urban center zoning district, which again is primarily residential in nature. That T5 district is intended primarily to accommodate downtown commercial uses. Most of Main Street, from about 10th all the way to 12th or 13th Street is T5, for example. More or less all of the single-family residential that kind of surrounds downtown is T3. This property was originally rezoned as a part of the rezoning of the downtown district back in 2007. As you can see here, it was included in the T3 year as, along with all the other residential properties on that same block between Knox and B Street. If you recall, the bulk of the existing light industrial zoning properties in the downtown area were excluded from downtown zoning district. This one, not to say it was rezoned in error, but it was again, it was rezoned with the remainder of that block, is the only commercial-type property in this block, again, between Knox and B Street, and then from 12th West. So you can see here, it's at that northwest corner of 12th and Knox, right across the street from Barrett Park, light industrial warehouse, office, storage property. Again, longtime existing residential, excuse me, commercial structure, and therefore the applicant is requesting to rezone it to a more commercial zoning district, yet still retain it within that downtown zoning district. So with that, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning application. I should note, staff was unable to get the downtown review board scheduled in time for this meeting between the applicant, application submittal and planning commission meeting. We're attempting to do that this week, so before the city council meeting. Just take that in consideration as you consider the application. Certainly approve it with that condition that it be accepted or recommended for approval by the downtown review board. But again, both you and the downtown review board are recommending bodies essentially to the city council. So we certainly do want to have that meeting prior to the city council. We're confident we can have that meeting yet this week. Should that not be the case, we would have to recommend postponing the hearing before the city council one meeting. Again, that's the staff report, Madam Chair. And if there are any questions, certainly feel free, I'll be here to answer those. Should you have any?
Does anyone have any questions for staff? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here? Would you like to come forward and be sworn in, please?
Please, I'm sure it's just about given this case to approve, so.
I do. Christine Bushyhead, 1220 Washington, Kansas City, Missouri. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Christine Bushyhead, and I'm here as representative of the applicant Huff Enterprises. They are the owners of this property. They've owned the property since approximately 2005, and during the second half of times they've had some challenges in trying to lease it, but finally have a tenant at that location. That tenant is actually occupying and has been there for about a month now under a temporary use permit that we applied for at the city. It is a, called the Barking Lot Grooming Shop, and it grooms dogs. No exterior kennel lean, it's all self-contained inside the building. We are in agreement with the staff, we believe that this, understanding that when you do blanket zoning, when you're putting new ordinances in place, sometimes a lot gets missed here and there, and this use is obviously commercial. It cannot be made into a residence, it's actually a commercial building. So with that, we answer any questions you might have, but we ask for approval of this application.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Bushyhead?
Well, I do, Madam Chair.
Ms. Banks.
You say that the dog grooming shop is, there's strictly, dogs are going to be inside the whole time?
They are inside. She has four, four large kennels in the building where they, they stay during, while they're waiting to have their grooming done, but there isn't any outside activity.
And there's not going to plan, because I know it backs right up to residential, so they're not planning on adding on to it or anything?
No, no. We actually own it, and, and they are a tenant, and there are no plans in that regard.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this? Wishes to speak in opposition to this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back up here on the record for any discussion. Quiet group tonight. I will close the public hearing. Any additional discussion prior to vote? I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Phillips.
I would move for approval of the rezoning, RZ 5123436, with the condition that it also be recommended for approval by the downtown review board.
And subject to all?
There are no other staff recommendations.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Madam Chair, may I ask?
Yes.
If there was be a conflict, I am on the downtown review, should I abstain, or go ahead and vote?
I think you can vote.
Okay, thank you.
Planning Commissioner Abbott?
Aye.
Commissioner Wallace?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartolata?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Trozen?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Chairman Colpepper?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the next item, which is again a public hearing for vacation for Parkway Estates. Mr. McDonald, I will open the public hearing. Could we have your exhibits, please?
Madam Chair, the city has eight exhibits. Number one is a staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Allen?
Thank you again, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. Again before this evening is a request to vacate three separate drainage easements located in the Parkway Estates Fourth Plat and Sixth Plat. You can see those, I think fairly clearly on the top map here on page two of your staff report. One is along Adams Dairy Parkway, the other two are along Moreland School Road. I believe in the staff report, page four of four, there's a pretty comprehensive analysis of the vacation request. Can I go over that just briefly? Again, with the location of those drainage easements on the five lots that are affected, they are at present undevelopable unless the applicant is requesting these, the vacation of the easements. With the previously approved Parkway Estates PRO Stormwater Management Plan, these three drainage easements are no longer necessary to manage storm water for Adams Dairy Parkway and Moreland School Road. Additional drainage easements were recorded with the final plats with Fourth and Sixth Plats for storm management to not be affected by this request for vacation. Existing utilities, corresponding easements will also remain unaffected, and again, as applicant states in their written explanation attached with your staff report, the vacation will not affect any adjoining properties, which is a requirement to move forward with the vacation request. So with that, staff is in agreement with what, with their submittal and with the application, and is recommending approval, and can certainly hopefully answer any questions you might have, otherwise applicant is here to give a presentation as well.
Do you have any questions for staff? Mr. Trozen?
Mr. Allen, once the property is vacated, I apologize if I miss this, who does the property revert back to?
Oh, good question. It will revert back to those individual lots.
That are adjoining?
That are, that are, yes, that essentially contain those.
So has that been decided as far as what each lot would get, or is it basically one half, one half?
It simply will fit the underlying property lines. And I can show, I think, a better map here. I think this is a better map. As you can see here, for example, down here, this is Track Two, as it's called. So the underlying property lines will not be adjusted or changed in any way as a result of this, so yes, so like, you know, this is a little bit more than half, we'll go back to this property. This is a little bit less, we'll go back to this, so, simply to essentially erase those lines, sort of the intent.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. Is the applicant here?
Please, I'm sure the customer in this case.
I do. Shannon Marcano, 4510 Bellevue, Kansas City, Missouri. Good evening, thank you for having us tonight. I do not have a whole lot to add to the staff report, I'm here representing the applicant. This is simply a cleanup. I like the description of erasing the lines for those drainage easements that are no longer needed, and as was also stated in the staff report, those lots are not developable without taking those easements off. So we're here to answer any questions, any clarifications you all might need.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this? In opposition? Seeing none, I'll bring it back up here on the record for additional comments. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Discussion, motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Parkway Estates Fourth and Sixth Plat, case number VAC 5123446, and there were no staff conditions.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Roll call vote, please.
Planning Commissioner Wallace?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartolata?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Trozen?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Abbott?
Aye.
Chairman Colpepper?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right. That brings us to the site plan and design review for Einstein, we will hear that in addition to the preliminary plat. Together, we will vote separately, though, please. Mr. Hawley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you will recall, this, these two items are both a continuation from the previous meeting. The subject property is about 21,000 square feet, it's located in the general business zoning district, and is located on the east side of 7th Highway, immediately south of Vesper Road. I think there were a couple of key issues, and I won't go over the entire staff report, we did that last time, but I think there were a couple of key issues that the commissioners had talked about, one of them being the safety issue with the drive-through, and I think this line calls out well that, that they will be installing posts and a railing along that drive-through in order to protect the tables. The other issue had to do with circulation, automobile circulation, and I have a couple things here that I wanted to put up. One of the things we talked about was this reverse angle, or this. This is the kind of angle that we might be talking about, in other words, it's not a, it's not a deep angle. Again, it's only a suggestion. After even further reviewing the situation out there, and again, [inaudible]. Show you on the aerial photo, the dark black line on the aerial photo is, is the approximate property boundary, and as you can see, from the back of these parking spaces to the back of the common drive, they have about 43 feet there. That certainly is enough room for someone to back out of those spaces and head out towards Highway 7. The only thing the angle parking would do is encourage them to actually go towards Highway 7 as opposed to trying to back out and conflicting if they were to go to the east around the building with the drive-through traffic. The last and final issue, I guess, had to do, as far as I recall, had to do really with the sidewalk issue and where that sidewalk was placed, and staff is certainly open, but given the landscape plan and the room that they have along Highway 7, we would entertain them pushing some of that sidewalk, though probably not all of it, towards their own property, and put it on their property with an easement. If you'll look at the aerial photo, you can see roughly what that would look like over here. So there isn't a great distance between that sidewalk and the street right-of-way, but there is some landscaping between the two, and although it may not be the ideal situation, our preference is always to see sidewalk within the right-of-way. And with that, I'll stand for any questions, and I think the applicant is here tonight as well, so that you can ask some of the questions that you had last week.
Are there any questions?
The sidewalk, looking at that property, and I'll follow up from the previous meeting, I started to point over there, that sidewalk, there's hardly any room there, and there's a fireplug sitting there right where the sidewalk, or in the sidewalk. It doesn't seem reasonable to me that there would be a sidewalk on a highway, a busy intersection, turn on both ends, it connects to nothing on either end.
On either side.
And that's a safety hazard, as far as I'm concerned, the sidewalk air plus the fireplug, I'm sure we can't move the fireplug, but that's right in the middle of it.
Okay.
That's my, my concern as far as the sidewalk's concerned on a busy highway, and turning in on both sides, in and out, and, you know, where would you go on the sidewalk anyway? So.
I understand.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Banks.
I think one of the other things that we had talked about that I was concerned last time was the trash, it was right as they drove to the drive-up.
The trash enclosure?
The trash enclosure was right there by the drive-up. And I'm just concerned on how are they going to come in and out to get it from there? I mean, I get it, they can do it before it opens up in the morning, or after.
Yeah, and I'll let the applicant address this as well, but you're right, the trash enclosure is located on the northeast portion of the site, and it faces outward. They do have cross-access agreements, and as you can see, there's a very large area right in here where the trash trucks. Where the trash trucks can maneuver to pick up the, the trash from that dumpster enclosure. The dumpster enclosure will actually face slightly northwest, the opening to it will. So, again, I'll let the applicant address that, if you have further questions.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Phillips?
The, the issue that we were discussing the last meeting concerning the, with that parking on the south side of the building, getting covered up by the stacking cars. You said there's 43 feet of space there between the parking spaces and the actual drive, the official drive lane?
Yeah, they have 28 feet between the out, between the back of that, approximately 28 feet between the back of those parking spaces and their property line, and then they have an additional, what is it, 43? So they have an additional nearly 18 feet, I guess, for the driving.
My, my concern is that nobody's going to be driving all the way over on that far south side of the, that big open space, they're going to, they're going to line up right behind those parking spaces. Is there anything that can be done, I know we talked about just painting, but anything even more substantial that can be done to make sure that those cars stay where they're supposed to be and not right up against those parking spaces?
You, you mean as they line up?
As they line up to go through the drive-through, right?
I'm sure that there are, and I'll let the applicant address that. I mean, I can, off the top of my head, think of a few things you could do, both of them would, would add some expense to the overall project, but I'll let the applicant address that and talk with you about that. But yeah, there are certainly some things they could do to, to separate those more.
Because I don't think a stripe is going to prevent a lot of people from doing that.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Wallace?
I'm back on the, back on the sidewalk issue. It seems like when I, when you drive down 7th Highway anymore, all the, everything that's fairly new's been developed, has a sidewalk in front of it. And all the old stuff, there's no sidewalks, and you go from sidewalk and then nothing and so, is that part of a overall master plan or something?
It's, it's, it's a code requirement. When, when somebody comes in and redevelops or plats their property, they have to provide sidewalk, and on arterial such as Highway 7, a major arterial, they're required to provide a five-foot sidewalk on both sides of the road. So rather than the city going in and installing that sidewalk, which we don't have funding for, we wait till development comes, and then we, we put sidewalk in, and it's not the most ideal of circumstances, because it is piecemeal as you go up and down 7th Highway, hence you see newer development with sidewalks, some of them appearing to go nowhere, and older developments without any sidewalk at all. Eventually, eventually, the, the dream for Highway 7 would be that the entire length have sidewalk along it.
I know a lot of the sidewalks that are in do have to curve, swing out, make adjustments for things like hydrants. Some of the areas have actually done the same for trees to keep, to keep the appearance.
Yeah, we're open to allowing them to put sidewalk on their property inside of an easement if that's what need be, in order to avoid relocating utilities.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you very much, Mr. Hawley.
Thank you.
Nope, not a public hearing, you're free to speak.
I forget. Joel Riggs, Schaefer, Klein &amp; Warren, on behalf of Block Real Estate Services. First, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen, planning commissioner, I apologize for not being able to be here two weeks ago, had a family challenge that prevented me from being here. I have talked to staff, I have talked to my client, we have looked. I think, I want to give a little bit of background about this, just because I know a lot of your questions are related to traffic and congestion. One thing we have to think about with Einstein Brothers Bagels is it's a bakery, first and foremost, it's not McDonald's, it's not a Jack in the Box. We did traffic analysis for staff, we went out and actually counted truck, or car stacking on existing Einstein Brother Bagels locations in Kansas City. And what we've noticed may be something different than what you're used to seeing with a normal drive-through, and that is, we saw a maximum stacking of about 30 seconds. Very limited drive-through stacking whatsoever. Most of our patrons are early morning coffee, bagel, they're not big orders of food, so they aren't stacking like a typical drive-through would stack. Staff mentioned that the 43-foot difference between our, our back of our parking lot and the cross-access easement. A normal drive for a common parking lot's 24, 25 feet, depending on where, what city you're in. We feel very comfortable in the fact that we could do something with striping and not doing something with curb, and the reason is this. Maintenance for the most part, cost is absolutely part of that, obviously, but when snow removal has to be done in a large parking lot like this, snow removal on my client's property is one property. The rest of this property is owned by something, somebody else, so they do have to do snow removal at different points, and they may not always use the same individual. So we prefer, if at all possible, to limit the curb and gutter, and that's probably the only way to address a concern. But again, from a stacking standpoint, if we're seeing two, maybe three cars stacking in a drive-through window, unlike seven, eight, nine cars where you would see at a typical fast food, such as McDonald's or something to that effect. We do still meet the code for stacking, given the layout that we have currently, but again, the, the traffic study that we submitted to staff, and we did do, not just a normal study, we actually went out and looked at this client in another location, and, and at a fairly prominent location on College Boulevard in, in Overland Park. So if, if it's going to be as busy there, it's going to be as busy there as anywhere, and we didn't feel that the transactions here would be as high as Overland Park's, we don't think that there's a stacking issue and circulation issue. In terms of the sidewalk, staff is absolutely correct, there, there are more than utilities that you can see above ground, there's also a gas vault, or gas valve that's in the road right-of-way, and an underground telecommunications vault on the very northern end. We are absolutely happy to work with them to meander that sidewalk any which way we need to, and I'll be turning in a final plat for your consideration here in a couple of weeks, so we can look at that if we need to do an exit, or a pedestrian easement. But there is limited space. We would hope that we could put it as much in the right-of-way as humanly possible, I know that's staff's desire as well as ours, but we also have a monument sign that, that is set back a little bit to the east of the existing that is there currently. In terms of the trash truck loading, Madam Commissioner, or Chair, Commissioner, I do think that we've placed it in probably the best available location for the ease of pickup. The way it's been angled is to facilitate trucks coming in, picking up, backing out, and leaving versus doing complete 180 or 90-degree turns in the parking lot. We've tried to angle it so it's not as visible from traffic traveling, would be southbound on 7, and we have landscaped it fairly heavily, or at least as heavily as that area will allow. So in our opinion, it's, it's the best possible location, but if there's something that is more advantageous for staff or for the planning commission in general, we'd be happy to look at that. We do need it on that north side, because that is the prominent access for the truck deliveries to come in, so happy to look at tweaking it if we need to, but I don't know that we can do it completely 90, we're trying to keep it. We're trying to keep it not impacting the property owner to the north. Even though we have cross-access, we don't want to be, I'll say, blamed for damage to a parking lot. So that's the reasoning behind from what we've done. With that, Madam Chair, I'm happy to answer any and all questions that the commission may have. And again, I apologize sincerely for not being able to be here two weeks ago.
Questions for the applicant? Mr. Trozen.
Well, another issue that came up a couple weeks ago was you're proposing four parallel spaces along that landscaped area.
Correct.
And you already exceed the parking requirements. So I'm not quite sure, what are the purpose of those four parallel parking spaces?
The thought process was employee parking in an area that doesn't facilitate normal customer traffic. That's the only reason they were placed there. If you're in disagreement with them, we're trying to provide them as much parking as possible, but being cautious as to the circulation around the site. That's why we did do the parallel parking. We didn't see it as a hindrance because of the landscaping that was there along Seven. But again, if it's something that the planning commission feels is objectionable, I can at least present it to my client. He would like to keep it. My client owns the building. The tenant would like to keep it for their employee parking.
But, you know, parallel parking is a lost art, I think, even though we're all required to do it sometimes.
Now you just hit a button.
Yeah, exactly. And, you know, I just didn't know if there would be potential conflict from the head-in parking, you know, backing in or backing out and trying to still provide two lanes of traffic between the parallel, the head-in, head-out parking, and then two lanes of-
It's a wonderful point, and I take your point sincerely. And I will tell you that the intention there was employee parking. The thought process being that they're there on a normal shift. They're going to be there fairly regularly from the morning. And we did not think of the conflict, but staff did mention that. That was the intent. But again, if it's objectionable, I would have to take that back to Einstein Brothers Bagels. They would prefer to keep it if at all possible.
Will those spaces be labeled as employee parking only?
There wasn't an intention to do that, but if there is the desire to do that, yes, they'd be happy to do that.
Any other questions? Mr. Trozen.
Just a follow-up to Mr. Haney's comment. You know, as far as, I think we addressed the safety concern, and I know staff wants to try and encourage it, the sidewalk to be in the right-of-way as much as possible. But I think there's other avenues as far as providing easements on the plat to accommodate that sidewalk. Was there any thoughts instead of the sidewalk being on the west side of the property along the highway being on the east side as far as through that landscape median area?
Oh, on the, yes, on the east side of the, yes, there was. And there's a fairly large monument sign that's there today that we would have to go around, and it would eliminate some of that parallel parking. And we didn't really think that from a bicycle standpoint, and not just pedestrians walking, but biking, it would make for a fairly tight radius to get back around. We have looked at several different options, and there's a lot of existing facilities there. And I think I even pointed out to staff before we submitted the plan that heads up, this is coming. It's not going to be a perfect scenario. And from an engineering standpoint, you would think it'd be pretty simple to put a sidewalk in a stretch of about 100-foot of roadway, but this is a tight little area with a lot of existing utilities. When we submit for the final plat, we'll have to submit public improvement plans for the sidewalk. And I would think that staff would be more than comfortable working with us to get something that's acceptable to them and ultimately acceptable to the residents of Blue Springs. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Billups, you had at the last meeting made a comment concerning the direction that the trash enclosure was facing.
I did.
Do you still have questions on that?
I would still like to see it rotated 90 degrees so that the opening faced the northeast instead of the northwest. But I understand your comment. I just wanted to make sure that all of the options had been looked at and not that somebody gets it, oh, well, that's the easiest thing, let's just plop it down there.
And actually, staff did point that out to me last week, and I did have my staff look at a couple of different options, as well as the angled parking on the south side. And we did run turning truck templates around to see how much of that parking lot would be impacted. It's our personal opinion from an engineering standpoint, this is the best way to lay it out for pickup and delivery of the trash dumpster. I won't say it's necessarily the best. I am a planning commissioner myself in Johnson County, so I do go through these as well. But from a physical engineering standpoint, we felt it limited the future impacts to other property owners.
When you started talking about the potential damage to the other parking lot, as you see, because if you turned it that way, the truck is probably going to exit by going in front of Zardas rather than going straight back out to Seven. You do create that additional hazard.
It's just a larger turning radius to get them turned around, and that's why we did what we did.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Riggs.
Madam Chair, thank you very much.
All right, I'll bring it up here. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to say that I appreciate him coming out. The real concern I had yesterday was, or last time, was just to make sure that they had looked at other options and not just, like I said, taken the first and easiest route. And I'm fairly confident now that they've done that, so I'm much more comfortable.
Very good. I would entertain a motion. We will first address the site plan design review.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Billups.
I would move for approval of Einstein Brothers Site Plan and Design Review, SPD R5123431, with the six staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the preliminary plat. Any discussion? I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'm on a roll.
You're on a roll.
I would move for approval of the preliminary plat, Einstein Brothers, PP 5123432, with the three staff recommendations.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Very good. That brings us to other business. Do we have any other items we need to be aware of, Mr. Allen?
Just one, Madam Chair. This Wednesday, the city is hosting the Congress for New Urbanism. It will be leading us in a Designing Walkable Urban Thoroughfares workshop from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Central Jackson County Training Facility in 40 Highway. They'll be focusing on 40 and Seven, that intersection, and 40 Highway overall. As you know, you're involved in, those of you who've been on the planning commission for a little while, last summer, went through with your Eastern Jackson County Planners Group, have looked at some alternative designs and options for 40 Highway. So it's kind of a next step progression of that, looking at more detailed design from some national experts. It is free training, thanks to Jim and his effort to get yet another technical assistance grant to bring these folks in. And thanks to Karen for putting all that, the specifics together, including the lunch. Last chance. If you're interested in attending, you haven't registered, let Karen know before you leave tonight, or let us know first thing tomorrow, so we can make sure we have enough materials. We do have a limited number of manuals that were published by ITE and Congress for New Urbanism, looking at Design Walkable Urban Thoroughfares. So we want to make sure we have enough materials for everybody. Again, let her know, or either Jim or me, before you leave tonight. Again, 9 to 2. It's free. And again, these are national experts, so look forward to seeing what they have to say about what we can do to fix, at least in part, 40 and Seven, at least for pedestrians and also for bikers.
Very good. Those who were able to attend the meeting that we had, training that we had on the EDC was an excellent presentation, and I want to thank staff. They always represent us well when we put on these functions. Karen for her pizza. But it was very, very good. Everybody was, I think, pleased with the information that we received. It was very educational, and again, we appreciate that. Any other things to be brought before this commission this evening? I would entertain a motion.
I would move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I just saw you yesterday.